Okay, I got six o'clock. All the work session to order. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Boone. Can you hear me? Counselor Solste?
Here.
Counselor Flack?
Here.
Counselor Irvin?
Here.
Counselor Stennett?
Here.
Counselor Roberts?
Here.
Mayor Goulet?
Here.
Okay, our work session is a discussion and background information on housing code amendments. Mr. Myers, are you taking this or where do we go?
Just a second.
Is Amanda logging in?
Eric just contacted her and she thought it was at 6:30. She said she was en route though and should be here in two minutes. I have her presentation in written form, but I don't have it so everybody can see it.
You don't have the PDF, the PowerPoint?
Uh-uh.
Let me see if I have it.
I do, I can email it to you.
Okay, I do have the revised version, so I'm gonna download it and then we'll we'll call it up and I'll have it at least on the screen so we can she can talk through that. So we don't have to wait for her to get that loaded.
I don't know how all that worked under glasses. That's like it just.
Oh, these were two power store ones. They worked fine, I did it last time.
Alright. I didn't want to disintegrate the glasses.
I had pizza earlier.
Oh yeah. There you go. You should be able to see that really good in the council chambers.
So Amanda's here and logging in, so it should be shortly.
Hey, look at that.
So I've got them up there for you, Amanda, so if you just beep or something when you want to advance to the next screen, will. Unless you have it on your screen already, ready to go.
I do, but this is fine. There aren't that many slides, so that's fine. Good evening, everyone. Sorry, I was on my way, my clock is a little off. I thought I was actually a little early, but anyway. Greetings. So, we are here to overview the housing code amendments ordinance that we'll discuss later tonight. So, at any point, if you want to stop and ask questions, please do. What I've laid this slideshow out in order of the ordinance that was presented, so it's in sections. If you want to go to the first slide, Richard? So legislative background kind of follows the wherethas of the original ordinance. As you know, the House Bill 2001 was passed by the state in August of 2019 while we were actually in the midst of doing a housing code audit for ourselves with our housing code committee. It was designed to increase middle housing opportunities in Oregon cities and specifically it requires cities that are between the populations of 10,000 and 25,000, which are considered medium cities, to allow duplexes on every lot and parcel where a single-family home is allowed. While we were, since we were already at that point working on the implementing the findings of our housing codes analysis, we decided through our development code committee to also integrate the findings of House Bill 2001 into the work that we were doing at that time. Mike was part of that committee. And so, we took an ordinance to counsel last fall. That ordinance was adopted in January, it was 3120. It made a lot of changes to the code. Specifically, it was looking at lot size, lot density, building height, a lot of other things like that. Specifically trying to encourage all types of housing throughout the city. It made, it included the recommendation of House Bill 2001 at that time to allow duplexes wherever single-family homes were allowed. But unfortunately, we have since the adoption in January, found a few things that we failed to capture that needed to have been implemented at the same time. References to maximum densities that we deleted in one section of the code that we failed to capture in other sections of the code. Our code's 500 pages, it's not that surprising that the committee even with all of the, everybody's eyes on it failed to capture certain other references that are cross-referenced throughout the code. So there are a few things that we need to pick up to continue the work that we meant to do in 3120. And finally, while we were doing that work, DLCD was of course also working with a statewide model code advisory committee and a technical advisory committee to come up with implementation OARs, Oregon Administrative Rules, for House Bill 2001. I was actually part of that committee for when we were talking about both the model code for the medium cities as well as the large cities and got to listen to a lot of those conversations and tried to at least influence them somewhat and did actually have some influence as far as how they worded it for the medium cities. But I wasn't necessarily as successful as we might have hoped for all of them, anyway. Some things got through in what they eventually adopted that we may not agree with, but they are now part of the Oregon Administrative Rules. They were adopted officially August 3rd, 2020. And those include model codes for duplexes in medium cities. Some of those new model codes went farther than we did when we adopted our ordinance 3120 back in January. If you want to go, Richard? So, as I said, we've brought a series of probably five different sections of the code that we feel at this point need to be amended, both to bring us into compliance with the rest of 31, the things that we think that we need to capture to pick up and clean up for 3120, as well as to meet the new OAR for House Bill 2001. The first one is really something we should have captured last January. We deleted maximum densities in table 1422.120, which is the chapter, the table that's titled Residential Districts Development Standards. That is a really important table. We really focused on it hugely when we were doing the code update. We spent a lot of time on it. We're probably the first city in the state that actually has deleted maximum densities because instead we're utilizing house sizes, lot coverage and height and dense and those types of elements to try to capture maximum densities. So we've deleted the formal maximum density requirements. We just failed to capture it in this one section. Because honestly, we don't usually use this section very often, we just happened to kind of wander by it at some point this year and went, oh, oops, we missed this. So it needs to, the words maximum need to go away from in here. We also need to delete the sentence in number two that says duplex lots used to comply with the density standard shall be designated on the final subdivision plat, because now all lots can be duplex lots. So House Bill 2001 actually basically eliminates the applicability of that sentence entirely. Questions about that one? No? Okay. So section six is another thing where this is actually in reference to the work that we did last year about accessory dwelling units. Ordinance 3120 included some of that work, we actually did some work the year before on accessory dwelling units. In all of those cases, we were intending on implementing what at that point was actually Senate bill. I was wrong in my note in the bottom, that's not House Bill, it's Senate Bill 1051, that said that Oregon cities have to allow accessory dwelling units for every single-family home that they allow. One ADU has to be allowed for every single-family home. So we wanted to clarify here that we want this to be single-family homes, not per dwelling, because if you, if we continue having the word dwelling in here, that would imply that if you had a duplex, you could have two ADUs on your property. And since we've increased densities already, we're increasing, we're decreasing parking, we're doing all of these other things, we're not certain at this point that we want to allow two ADUs on a property with a duplex. So we're, staff is recommending that we change this word dwelling here to specify that we intended single-family home when we were making, when we were talking about Yes, Greg?
On that previous slide, the word cottage there, I think this was going to come up later in the meeting, but does separate cottage, the word cottage have a definition that's going away? I wonder if that should be included in the accessory dwelling definition or clarification?
In this particular case, it would imply that it was a detached structure. It could instead say attached, detached, attached, detached, or above, detached garage. I think that is actually directly out of the language for Senate Bill 1051. So I think we'd have to leave it. The definition of accessory dwelling is actually defined by House, by Senate Bill 1051. It's an interesting question. I will check with that, Greg. Okay?
Yeah, this was brought to my attention, so I looked in the definitions in our current code, and we do have a definition of a cottage. This is a small house generally containing not more than 1,200 square feet of floor area that may be used as an accessory dwellings. We have a definition of cottage which actually seems to bolster this ADU item.
Yeah, it's still applicable, I think, here.
But you're removing that definition in the ordinance. Section four removes the definition of cottage in 1413300, section four of this ordinance.
Because cottage cluster is now defined by House Bill 2001 specifically as 900 square foot footprint versus the 1,200. So those two were in conflict, which is why that definition is being deleted.
I would probably suggest that we go attached, detached, you know, or separate structure, or above a detached garage. I mean, that makes more sense, you're not, then you're not drawing attention to something that's been deleted as a definition, yeah.
I think the intent is to be that it's attached or detached. So the word, the term separate cottage could be replaced with detached. It's a good catch, thank you. Okay, next?
I keep going there.
Yeah, thank you, sorry. So cottage cluster is something that we adopted with ordinance 3120. We had, cottage clusters had existed in our code prior to last year, but we had had no architectural design standards or no implementation standards for them. So we adopted standards for them last year, but we inserted this chart for parking and then we turned around and approved two cottage clusters that didn't, that based on the old code, that basically went one-to-one units, one parking space per one unit. So we're at this point recommending that we replace this chart with just a one-to-one, one parking space per cottage. To note that our new cottage cluster housing standard has a maximum footprint allowed for cottage clusters of 900 square feet per dwelling unit. Minimum number of units that are allowed on a site to be classified as a cottage cluster is four, and the maximum number is 12, with a, with a overall density depending on the over the base zoning. So it's 50% for the single-family residential, 60% for R2, etc. So this is a recommendation, this is not required, but, so if you felt that you wanted to keep the current chart, we could.
That was my comment.
Yeah, this is just a recommendation. There's nothing here to, and I didn't write any notes here to state that we had to do this, this is just a recommendation. Next? Yes, Greg?
Out of curiosity, what would a three or a two unit or dwelling unit not cluster, what would that be classified, is that like three ADUs or?
We don't allow three detached dwelling units on a property right now. Our code would allow a single-family home and an ADU. It would allow townhouses hypothetically, that are, so four townhouses could be attached or three townhouses could be on a property, which would be single-family homes that are attached by bare, shared walls, basically. But there would be no way under our current code to have three detached dwelling units on a property.
Is there any reason for that?
Largely because it's, it's trying, that's actually one of the things that in the larger cities' model code, they actually specified that the definition for duplex and triplex in the larger cities' model code actually says that when they're talking about duplexes and triplexes, they are not necessarily required to be attached. That's actually in the new state law for those, for the larger cities. So if we were a city that it was above 25,000, the new OAR would actually be changing our definition of duplex to, which currently our definition of duplex and triplexes are attached, we would be required to change those definitions to detached, or is allowed, basically. We would have to remove the word attached. We didn't actually, staff didn't, I didn't feel that we really were prepared to go that far, to change duplexes to being two detached units on a property, or triplex being three detached units on a property. We could, it's a conversation that I think, it's a bigger conversation. It has a lot of impacts for how you would develop a property. Would be a separate conversation, I think, tonight.
We don't have, we have, the current cottage clusters is in there, and how did we put in the tiny homes either for Cottage Village or for Legion? How does this apply, or how does a change apply to those?
So the Legion cottages actually went in right before we adopted the ordinance 3120. They were adopted about a month or two months before we adopted that code. They however, had the benefit, we had already written the draft code, and we were actually working with the University of Oregon and that group to actually vet sort of the new code while they were doing the Legion cottages. So it actually complied with our standard even though they did it as a conditional use permit under the old code, because that's how cottage clusters were defined and the old code was as conditional use permits. We didn't have any standards for them, we just allowed them conditionally. The tiny homes on Madison, on the other hand, came in as a multi-family development. So they actually came in through a site design review process as a multi-family development. Totally different process with a different set of criteria.
So I guess, one of the questions I have is the maximum footprint for one of these dwelling units is 900 square feet. How are you going to get three bedrooms out of a 900 square foot if we leave this chart?
Right, a footprint does mean that they could go two stories.
Okay.
So technically you could have very small bedrooms.
I guess you'd have to go three stories to get three bedrooms.
You would have to do, you could only go three stories in the higher-density zones. You can't do a three-story house in a single-family residential zone in Cottage Grove, so you would never see a three-bedroom, most likely, cottage cluster in, on R1 zone in Cottage, I don't, those would be really tiny bedrooms. And I guess you could, never say never, but those would be very small bedrooms. But I guess you could squeeze in, in a 900 square foot, three small bedrooms upstairs. But yes, hypothetically, if you did a three-story, you could do it that way in higher-density zones. The 900 square feet is actually in OAR, that is actually in the state law. So that is a piece that's actually defined for us, so we can't actually change that. Any other questions? Okay. Section eight. So this one is one that staff has actually intended to change for quite some time, we just hadn't had an opportunity to bring it, and so we rolled it into this ordinance. It is actually to bring us into compliance with a piece of Oregon, ORS actually, 197.3078G, which states that a city or county can subject a manufactured home to development standards that are applied to single-family homes, but you can't apply anything else. So you can't treat a manufactured home differently than you would treat a single-family home. So our current code actually has a stipulation that manufactured homes have to be multi-sectional and have a square footage that's not less than 1,000 square feet. This is really a holdover from when single wides were really awful. It was an attempt to keep what would have been called park models out of our residential districts as well. I've personally seen, I've found that most of the manufactured homes that are coming out anymore, the smaller ones are actually rather cute, so I don't know that this, it is really anymore a standard that we need anyway, but the state law has made it so that we really shouldn't have this code in our standard. So we are instead recommending that we replace it with the application of our, the architectural design standards that we already have that apply to all manufactured homes over 400 square feet. That threshold of 400 square feet is actually the same threshold that applies to any stick-built house or garage or detached structure in the residential zones anyway. So if you're building a house over 400 square feet, you would also have these standards apply to you. If you're building a detached garage that was over 400 square feet, these standards also apply. So we are treating them the same as any other stick-built house in the single-family or medium-density residential areas. Okay. And then you'll notice that I skipped nine, we'll talk about it last, if you don't mind, because it has probably lots more conversation to be had. So I wanted to make sure we didn't not have adequate time to talk about this one. Section 10 is a piece that, this is to try to bring us into compliance with House Bill 2001. It's really a line of code that is specifically, just doesn't work at all if we're trying to allow duplexes wherever single-family homes are allowed. So if you go to the next slide, Richard? This is an example of a flag lot that was built right off of North 16th here in Cottage Grove. It's pretty typical of how these developments occur, where you end up with two lots that are facing on the street and four lots that are coming off of a shared panhandle or a flag that goes back to four parcels going off the back. And you'll have multiple easements, so they'll have a shared driveway that will share those areas there. The current code allows this, it restricts a single-family home to each one of these back lots. And it says you cannot have more than four houses, four dwellings occupying that flag. So no more than four dwellings may use that flag. That is in direct opposition for House Bill 2001, because if we're now required to allow duplexes wherever single families may allow, we have to be allowed to allow a minimum of eight dwelling units back here. Or even, it's actually also in noncompliant with the ADU standard, since technically we are also required to allow ADUs wherever we allow single-family homes. So technically, we, technically we should be allowing eight. So what we are, what we are recommending is removing that restriction that says, what currently it says that you can only allow four. We're just going to delete that sentence. And default back instead to fire code standards for how flag lots are built, which is basically that you have to have a fire department turnaround. So this parcel would have to have a full fire department turnaround on here in order to provide, to make sure that the fire department has, so it would be some, either a full circle or a T-shaped fire department turnaround, or an L. There are three different versions of fire department turnarounds that are lawful in order to make sure that there's, they meet fire code, but otherwise they could have, these lots would be treated like any other single-family lot in the city. Mike?
So, let's go to our parking concerns here, that we're now off-street, yet not requiring enough parking, and you know what's going to happen, is people are going to be parking in the fire lanes. And so I'm just kind of wondering, this just really doesn't make sense, that we can't require more parking, especially in a situation like this, where we know there's going to be a huge amount of problems with the duplex in a configuration like this.
I don't disagree with you, Mike. I'm just saying that state law prohibits us restricting these lots to, to single-family So, this is, this is just to bring us into compliance with state law. If you go back, Richard, you can see the line, the sentence that we actually are recommending that we strike. Because what it says right now is that once uniform fire codes are met, so in this is, we're already assuming that we're meeting uniform fire code, the maximum number of dwelling units shall be four. And that was actually inserted into the code in 2008, because it did not used to be there. Because of very concerns, like Mike was saying, we had a lot of complaints from neighbors about, against neighbors for parking. And so we inserted a caveat in here that says, no, you can't do this because it was getting so problematic. And so we restricted it to a maximum number of dwellings shall be four. However, we are now being told by the state basically that we can't do that. So we now have to allow duplexes wherever single-family homes are allowed, which means we could change this to instead to be a maximum number of dwellings can be eight. I would just recommend instead we just delete it.
If, if the, if the main problem here with parking arises with flag lot style configurations, can we restrict, and maybe this is getting ahead of ourselves on section nine, but can we do a carve-out and, and make it's for flag lots specifically, that, you know, it has to be more than one parking space per, per unit? Or can we do something the opposite, where you do keep it at four, but because of House Bill 2001, that means they couldn't build the same way? So therefore you couldn't create that parking problem?
Okay. We cannot not allow duplexes wherever single-family lots are allowed. So we can't carve out, we can't carve out an exception for, we can't treat duplexes differently. So we couldn't carve out an exception for a single-family lot that is a panhandle and treat it differently, and then a duplex lot for parking. However, I get, I'd have to think about whether or not we could basically prohibit panhandles. I wouldn't necessarily recommend that, because we have a lot of examples of development of half-developed properties within the city, that were we to eliminate this as a potential option for development, it would mean for a lot of potential redevelopment that will never occur. We have a lot of long-leading properties that this is the only way of getting to the parcels, portions of the property that are currently not developed, because the houses are often situated right up at the street and they have a half an acre or a quarter and a meter behind them. And this is the primary method for developing. I don't personally love panhandles, but it is a valid development tool for a lot of infill. And one of the things we're trying to solve here is the need for more infill, because we don't want to have to push out our urban growth boundary. We're already, we're pretty restricted geographically by hills and wetlands and rivers. We don't have a lot of greenfield space around us anyway, and so we need to be able to figure out how to encourage and incorporate more development within the city, and these are one of the primary tools to do so. So I don't actually think that restricting the access to this type of development is going to help us any in the long run. I agree that parking is a problem. However, I can say that for decades, we didn't have this restriction against having multiple lots on panhandles. We've only had that restriction for about one decade. So it, we, we didn't have it for many, many years. So going backwards and removing that restriction again, maybe it's not that big of a deal. There are a lot of developers out there who will tell you that that's actually a good thing, that that restriction really hindered what they could do over the last 10 years. thing, that that restriction really hindered what they could do over the last 10 years.
Now, could we widen the increased size of the pole or require a panhandle lot to be bigger, so that there is a little more land that would be there for, in case a duplex is constructed? Are those ways to possibly look at that? What does that do to the, the number of lots that are out there?
You could require a panhandle lot to be larger, hypothetically. If, when you're looking at panhandle lot size, we already do not count the, anything that's considered part of the panhandle easement as part of the lot size. So like when this tax lot here is 1606, its dimensional standard does not include anything that would be considered part of the easement for the panhandle. So we say, if you have to have, say, 6,000 square feet for a minimum, minimum build size, that 6,000 has to be irrespective of the fire department turnaround or the panhandle, because, and that is actually, was one of the other things we inserted into the code in 2008, because prior to 2008, that wasn't the case. And so we had a lot of lots that were built where the, the lots got smaller and smaller as you got back. So we've tried to fix that, so that you don't have that reduction and you've lost so much of your buildable area. So at least you have a legitimate good size out, apart from the panhandle. One of the other pieces that we actually are still working on trying to figure out how to address with a fire code, and it is not before you right now, but it's still something that staff is trying to figure out, is how to plan better for that fire department turnaround and make sure that that fire department turnaround is adequately shown on the plats, so that it is clearly not part of the buildable footprint of the house, so that the, that 6,000 square feet isn't also part of the fire department turnaround. This particular parcel, this, this development here was actually plotted before the fire department turnaround was required to be plotted with it. So this is actually Clayton Payne's. And it, the fire department turnaround is in addition, so this house in the back never hasn't yet gotten built, because half a lot is taken up by the fire department turnaround. So it's actually a good example of why we need to fix that.
What's the width of the poles?
25 feet minimum, fire department clear. So it's actually, it's 25, they have to maintain 25-foot clearance with a 20-foot pavement. That's a fire code, universal fire code standard.
And that's the combination of all the poles?
Correct. I think it's 12 and a half. Each one of those stripes is 12 and a half feet. 12 and a half, 12 and a half. I believe that's the case on this one. And that's, which actually would be more than 25, so I'm not, maybe it's seven, 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 and then a little bit of extra. Eric's nodding, so yes, it's seven and a half, seven and a half, seven and a half, seven and a half, something like that.
Yes. And these are all duplexes on this development, too.
Yeah. And it's a mess back there.
I'm not, like I said, I'm not necessarily saying this is my favorite. I'm saying that this is, that the line in our code does not comply with House Bill 2001.
But even though the fire code says 25, could we up that above the fire code? Could we go to 30 is what you have to have for a flag? The pole, I mean.
I think we would want to do some work to determine what kind of other negative impacts that might have, because we already have restrictions on how, what the minimum frontage is for these lots. And if we're trying to use them as infill, we want to make sure that we can get those, a flag in, without making it impossible to ever develop these lots. Because most of our parcels are built, are just, most of the lots that we're having these kinds of developments have a very specific development pattern. Most of them were originally plotted in a certain time period between the '30s and the '50s. So they have a really, pretty standard width. The houses are set up in a specific format, so trying to get the flag next to them may be hard if we widen that flag requirement. It may also be hard to justify outside of just fire code. The issue is, can we, or could we do something different regarding compliance as far as posting for that fire lane? And could we treat the, could we treat the requirements for the paving and marking of the fire lane differently, so that it's clear that people aren't supposed to be parking on it? Could we require curbs? We could. If we require curbs, that might make them harder to park on, versus how most of them right now are just asphalt and they're easy to park over. So you have a 20-foot asphalt with five foot of gravel on either side, or two and a half feet of gravel on other side, so they're really easy to intrude in. You could, there is a number of ways to make them less easy to park in. Which doesn't necessarily solve the problem. It just moves the parking to a different location on the lot.
Yeah, and I was going to say, and we're kind of shooting ourselves in the foot to solve a parking problem and limiting the housing that we're really desperately trying to get, so.
So, yeah.
Do we put any kind of easement or, or restriction on that, that we can enforce that fire code, that fire lane in there, and the part no parking?
That would just be an agreement that we would make with the fire department as to who actually enforces. Right now, our agreement with the fire department is that they enforce. We would have to have an agreement with the fire department. We would have to have an agreement with the fire department with South Lane. It would, could be an MOU between the city and the fire department as to who actually enforces those.
Okay.
All right. So the big one is the next slide. So this is what was in your, what was originally proposed. The slide after this is actually an alternative that staff is going, is going to show you tonight that you could also consider. As I said, this is, there are two things that this chart modification is trying to capture, the things that are required, and then the things that staff is proposing as a measure of fairness and equity, and basically just trying to address that need for additional housing. So the things that are required, the ADU modification is actually to bring that into compliance with the changes that we already made to the code last year that didn't make it into this chart. So we already made the change elsewhere in the code, we just didn't change this chart for accessory dwelling units. So our code already says the ADUs don't have to have parking. We made that change based on House Senate Bill 1051. Oops. We just never came around to this chart, so that needs to change to a none. The one that House Bill 2001 and OAR 660-046-125 is requiring us to do now is that duplexes, we have to change the duplex requirement to one space per dwelling unit. Duplexes are considered two dwelling units. We can only require one space per dwelling unit, so two for a duplex, basically. The new standard says a medium-city may not require more than a total of two off-street parking spaces for a duplex. So our standard needs to state one space per dwelling unit for duplex. Or it could say two spaces for a duplex, if we want to make it more, that we can, either way we want to word it, basically a duplex can't have, require any more than two. Currently, we require four. So that is a change that we must make. Staff was originally proposing that we change multifamily to just be one space per dwelling unit for everything as well. And our current chart captures two and three-family dwellings, which are duplexes and triplexes together. So if we're making the change to duplexes, we'd also be making the same change to triplexes. So, Richard, if you want to go to the next page. Alternately, we can do this path, which is a little less extreme. It complies with House Bill 2001, so it continues with the modification to the accessory dwelling to bring that into compliance. It makes duplexes be one space per dwelling unit. And then it puts triplexes and quadruplexes with multifamily and then leaves the multifamily standard alone. What this does is brings that level of fairness back. So the old code, currently, what we'd be changing is we do a lot, we're moving a duplex down from four to two, but then a triplex, if we did not make any changes to a triplex, you'd have to have six. So you'd go from a duplex needing two parking spaces, a triplex would then need six, and a quad would need four. Who's ever going to build a triplex or a quad if you're going to have to triple and quadruple in a number of parking spaces? That's just silly. So, and particularly because most triplexes and quad, and quadplexes that are built in Cottage Grove get smaller, the number of, the, you know, the, the number of bedrooms get smaller rather than larger. So to, to actually make that make sense and encourage more development of triplexes and quads, it made sense, and I think this is a great idea, it was Richard's actually, was that we pull triplexes, quadplexes into the same category as multifamily. And then you're looking at them based on the size of the dwelling units they're producing, rather than immediately assuming a triplex needs six parking spaces. If they're building one-bedroom units, they would only need three. But if they're building two-bedroom units, they would need six. So the, it's a larger family-sized units would need more parking. It's, it puts them right smack where we put them when we adopted the MUPD, because we considered triplexes and quads multifamily under the MUPD standard. It puts them under this, they are already under the same building code as multifamily, because they're considered commercial development already. So it actually classifies them together with other multifamily, commercial construction. So this is an alternate that we were going to propose.
And, and one of the things, and I can't remember if it's in the Eco Northwest or in the DLCD report, but that's one thing they noted, if, when the size of the dwelling unit goes up in bedrooms, the car, number of vehicles dramatically increases as well. So I think that takes care of that with, with this kind of a situation, yeah.
Thoughts? I know this is not something you'd seen before, so.
Yeah. So I, I don't have the other in front of me. So our current code for multifamily is the, this, what's here is the one space per bedroom? One for two-bedroom, two for three or more?
Correct.
Okay. So we're just moving the triplex away from the duplex, and so, okay. It's probably a good compromise.
And calling out quads, for somehow quads got skipped in the old chart? So I'm calling them out, that's all.
So this still reduces parking, but not as extreme as what we were originally proposing?
Correct.
And, and kind of for your information, Eric did some numbers and, and visited with the, the proposed, what, 88-unit multifamily development that's being worked on right now? And the number of bedroom units that they have and the amount of parking, it totaled out that they would need to have 98, was that right, Eric? And they were actually putting in 112 or 100 and?
102 with four of those being 88.
So they will comply with what they're, it doesn't put any burden on that development, because of the large number of one-bedroom apartments that they were putting in. I think there were 44 or 48 that were one-bedroom, and the rest were a mix of the two and three.
I, I guess I still, I still think we need to talk to our legislators about, you know, concerns around this just absolute, you know, there needs to be some exceptions built in for, you know, let's say we've got a narrow street because of whatever constraints, and there's a, you know, no parking on one side because of fire access, or, I mean, it just seems that their, their, their bill really did not take all the considerations a community faces into practice. I think this is a great compromise. I do think that there still needs to be some protections for those circumstances that are not black and white, you know, cookie cutter, everything's the same size scenario.
I would say, Mike, that I don't disagree at all with what you, what you said. And obviously, the code is a living document. If we make further amendments based on further conversations with our legislatures, then we can come back and change it again. And we will.
And I think one of the pluses of, of doing this in, in the code is we can go to our legislators and say, here's what they really should look at. If you're looking at a duplex that's two, three-bedroom units on the duplex, you're creating some parking issues. Now, if it's a one-bedroom duplex, each one, then yeah, one, one space per the unit is perfectly fine. And if we can get that moving forward and, and show that it works with the others, and it should work with the duplexes as well.
Right. Maybe, I mean, if we could have put the duplex down in the same category with multifamily, that would have been fine.
Yeah. It does, it does go to our, our basic premise that, hey, legislature, let, let local governments manage and run their, their communities. That's what land use laws were supposed to do. Don't sit in Salem and sit and tell one-size-fits-all-for-all cities. It doesn't, yeah.
I can at least tell you that of the model code that was adopted for, for the small cities regarding House Bill 2001, this is the only section of the code that we were not in absolute compliance with, or exceeded with the changes that we've already made. So in many ways, we're a high-flying standard for implementation of House Bill 2001, because we were doing it anyway. Cottage Grove had already made a commitment to trying to address housing options through our housing needs analysis, and then the housing implementation study, and the MUPD, and the other work that we've been doing. We've already been doing it, and we're seeing, we're starting to see the impacts of the changes that we've been making with the additional, with the apartment complexes and the townhouses and the additional affordable housing that's been coming in. It's wonderful. So we're starting to see those changes, and we are actually an example for the state for how to do this. This is just, this is the most controversial piece, I think. Parking is just really controversial. Yeah. Greg?
To Mike's point about going to the legislator, I just wonder if there's a way that we can be as effective as possible as a council, maybe if it's like presenting a letter that we all support that says, hey, this doesn't work really well for our, our, our city. We'd like to see a little more leeway in, in making it fit. What, what would you recommend as an effective tool, if not that, to, I mean, League of Oregon cities, to, to influence our legislator?
And you're exactly right. The League is a, is a great place to, to start with. But then also, whenever we, whenever we meet with our legislators, to just point this out and make sure they're aware of, of the issue and the challenge that's there for us, and, and highlight that, those are, those are probably the ways. If you wanted to have a letter, you know, you could authorize the mayor to send a letter to them with some history and background of what we've done and how things are going, that this is the one area that really is a, is a burr in our saddle, because it doesn't work for us, you know, and kind of put that to them.
Jake?
Jake?
Yeah, I will say, in my time with the League, House Bill 2001 is statewide spoken of in, I will say, non-fond terms by city councillors and mayors all over the state. So I think working with the League is probably the way to go. They've already got, you know, one-pagers and things that we can, here, we can push for our specific state legislators and really lean on them while other cities are doing that with their, with their own.
And, and we just share this as an exact example of why it's a problem and why it's an issue, so that they, when the bill comes up, they've got, here's a story directly from a city of why it's not working, yeah.
And this will be a good story to give to the League, yes.
And it's a city that's actually trying to address housing issues, not just putting our head in the sand and refusing to address it. Yeah. And, you know, I actually really am proud of the work that we've been doing regarding housing. I think the parking from on high is not a great solution, but I was trying, we're trying to address, do the best that we can within the parameters they've given us. So, okay.
I'm not sure how to take it from there, but can we, what would be required to, to get that to them? Do we need to write a letter, or do I need to do it, or how does that work?
Well, I would suggest, and I think Jake was going to say something, but I may be saying what Jake's going to say.
Go ahead.
We have the City Hall Day at the Capitol coming up this week. And I think the League's going to make some presentations about some of those different bills and issues and challenges that cities are facing. Let's see what they're doing first, and then maybe if, if they have some kind of movement going or something happening, and then we may also have the opportunity to speak out to our legislators that day, or to other legislators about this challenge as well. Because I think, Mayor, did you sign up for that, too?
Yeah, I signed up for it.
And I don't know, I was going to bring this up and report from the manager, anybody else that wants to sign up for Thursday. They just mailed, they just emailed out the platform and the information on how to log in and be a part of that throughout the day on the 28th. But it, it may have some opportunities there. I haven't looked at what that program is, but we may see, because 2001 is an issue for the League, we may see some opportunities there. If that doesn't, if there isn't anything there, then we may want to meet at the next meeting and say, yeah, let's authorize the mayor to prepare a letter saying, here's our case, and, and send that off to our legislators. And to the League, yeah. Did you have anything else, Jake?
I, I think that covers. I, I think that covers it. I will say, because I don't know if staff can really say this, the current administration in Salem is very fond of one-size-fits-all solutions that they haven't thought through all the way. So 2001 is not the only one of this sort of thing we're running into.
Right. It will be an uphill battle.
Well, and I provided you on purpose the studies that DLCD provided us during the Model Code Advisory Committee work, so that you see what they were using as their justifications. It was an uphill battle even in that conversation. They're pretty confident of their findings.
Yeah, and, and that's one of the reasons why I thought that it was kind of, made sense to tie this to this bedroom size or the unit size, that that's even noted in their studies and they talk about that a little bit and that it increases vehicle counts. So that would make sense based on their own studies, too.
And thankfully, we will not hit the large city size for quite some time, so we won't be forced to deal with triplexes and quads on single-family lots for a long time, which is the next mark-up in House Bill 2001.
What is that size?
25,000. We won't get there for a while.
Yeah.
Weeks, it's going to take weeks.
I just wanted to say thank you to staff for looking at, you know, finding a compromise, because I just, you know, I, as you could tell from Friday, I was not really thrilled with this. And while I still don't think this is ideal, I think this is a good compromise and I really appreciate the time and energy that you folks put into this.
So do we, do we log off of this and then come back on or?
No, we can stay in this meeting. This, this, if you log off, you'll be back into the same place. We kept this one since it's not an executive and we don't have to record this separately. So this will just flow right into the regular meeting. So if you want to adjourn the work session, then we can just sit here and stare at each other until seven o'clock.
Thank you all for your attention.
Thanks. We'll adjourn the work session and we will reconvene in eight minutes, I believe. Just remember, you're being recorded still.
So if you do want to get up and go do something, turn your camera off and, yeah, you could do that or? Oh, I need to take that off, don't I? Yeah.
They make everybody bigger again.
Yeah.
Now, I have lost everybody, so I'm going to have.
Everybody's got their camera off except for Amanda's in fade.
Yeah, they all turned their cameras off for the, the break. But yeah, me turning my screen, screen sharing off, I lost everything, but it was just hidden underneath stuff.
I turned my camera off mainly because I wanted to get up and stretch my legs and I, I like to maintain the mystique of, is he wearing pants?
The mystique. Oh, reattach cameras. There we go, okay. I had detached cameras there for a minute. I don't know what that meant, but. Is our, is our cameraman in there getting artistic by just showing the All-America City logo there for us?
He's having fun.
Hey Mayor, you do have a couple things left.
Okay. I didn't sleep good last night, it's going to be a long night.
Tomorrow's tomorrow?
No. Tomorrow is the only day this week I don't have a meeting.
Wow. Are they all virtual?
No, yeah, well, I'm not sure about Wednesday and then going Thursday.
At least the virtual one's not happening.
Yeah, but Thursday's from one o'clock until eight.
Oh, yeah.
I was telling my boss everything and he goes, you volunteered.
Yeah, yeah, like at the end of that reception or something.
I got Elkhog after six, so I won't be able to whatever it's in.
So you got the League and then?
Oh, I was doing this.
Can you see this one okay?
Yeah.
Or is it, it's turned out to be a different scene?
Yeah. I mean, it was documented, it was easier for me to just look at this.
Quick process question. If we go with the amended ordinance, is it going to be then a first reading? Because it hasn't been available for a week.
I would, I would suggest that, that it would only, it would require a second read, a second vote, just to be on the safe side. It's, it's, it's a significant change, but it's sort of leaving it alone, too, of what the code currently is, but it is a change from what the ordinance was published at. So just to be on the safe side, I would do only a first vote, yeah.
Okay, I got seven o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order. Will the recorder please tell the roll?
Counsel Roberts?
Here.
Counsel Stenit?
Here.
Youth Representative? Counsel Boone?
Here.
Counsel Fleck?
Here.
Counsel Solzby?
Here.
Counsel Irvin?
Here.
Mayor Gelling?
Here.
Okay, item three, there are no items to be added to the agenda. Brings us to item four, appearances of interested citizens for items not on the agenda. This is a time for citizens to comment on items not listed on the agenda for a maximum of 30 minutes. Individual speakers must be recognized by presiding officer, provide their name and address and will be allowed up to five minutes or less with council approval. Comments regarding any matter scheduled for public hearing may be provided only in that hearing. Comments on agenda items may be taken prior to council's discussion on that item. Council will not engage in any discussion or make any decision based on public comments at this time. However, the council may take the comments under advisement for discussion and action or for further council meeting. If anybody wishes to speak. Seeing none, we will move on to item five, public hearings. This evening, we have a public hearing on ordinance amending Cottage Grove Municipal Code, Title 1 for Development Code, the Housing Code Amendments, the record, including the Planning Commission's recommendation and testimony received in tonight's public hearing. These proceedings are, are being held virtually and will be recorded. Anyone wishing to speak, if you are accessing the meeting using a video, please raise your hand and you will be recognized. If you're accessing the meeting using audio, please announce that you would like to speak when called upon to speak. You must be recognized by the chair and state your name and address for the public record. We ask that each speaker limit themselves to no more than three minutes. Please remember that all presentations will be timed. You will be informed when your allotted time has expired. All speakers exceeding the time limit will be asked by the chair to immediately conclude his or her's remarks. If you do not finish your presentation, be sure to provide a copy of your statement to the staff. Written testimony may be offered and will be considered and made part of the record. In order to minimize repetitive testimonies, organizations that are encouraged to have only one person speak for that group. Each person may testify only once unless called upon at the request of council member to respond to a question. Thank you for your cooperation. Before we begin, do any counselors wish to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest in this matter? Seeing none, I will open the hearing. I'll open the hearing for ordinance amending Cottage Grove Municipal Code, Title 1 for Development Code, Housing Code. May we please have staff report?
Good evening, councilors. So the purpose of this public hearing is to receive comments on the proposed amendment to the City of Cottage Grove Municipal Code, Title 14 Development Code, Housing Code Amendments, which is amending sections of Title 14 related to housing design standards, specifically to bring our code into compliance with House Bill 2001. The Planning Commission held a public hearing in October, on October 21st, 2020, recommended approval to the council of this ordinance. The city council held a work session right prior to this meeting to discuss the history and background of the proposed amendments. It is now appropriate that the council hold a public hearing on the ordinance.
Do any counselors have questions of the staff? Seeing none, we wish to hear from anyone who is interested in this proposal. Please remember to state your name and address for the record. Does anyone wish to speak? Seeing and hearing none, do any counselors have any further questions? I will now close the public hearing. Legislative hearing script. Okay. Brings us to item B, public hearing for ordinance amending Title 1.5 of the Cottage Grove Municipal Code related to system development charges. Mr. Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on October 26, 2020, staff presented to the city council information on system development charges regarding methodology to calculate water and wastewater STCs using meters. Staff proposed to calculate STC fees using meter size for development projects that require meters larger than one and a half inches and maintain the current STC methodology using fixture count for development, development projects using meters 1.5 inches or smaller. City council directed staff to prepare an ordinance for your consideration. Legal council prepared the ordinance to amend Chapter 15.16, System Development Charges. The ordinance amends subsections 15.16.050, subsection C1 and C2, to calculate STC fees for water and wastewater, commonly known as sewer, on developments utilizing water meters larger than one and a half inches by a meter size flow factor, not by fixture counts. So in accordance with ORS 223.304, subsection 7A, on October 27, 2020, staff gave notice to both the Lane County Home Builders Association and the Cottage Grove chapter of the Eugene Association of Realtors. On November 27, 2020, the proposed ordinance and modified STC methodology was sent to both the home builders and the realtors associations. The proposed amendments have been available at City Hall for public review since at least that date. So the recommendation is for the council to hold a public hearing.
Okay, at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, hearing's closed. Item six, consent agenda. Move approval?
Second.
Have a motion with a second A discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Okay, item seven, resolution and ordinances. Item A is first vote of ordinance amending Cottage Grove Municipal Code, Title 1 for Development Code, Housing Code Amendments. Ms. Ferguson?
Council has now held the public hearing for the proposed amendment for the Title 14 Development Code modifications for housing. The Planning Commission held their public hearing on this attached ordinance in October, on October 21st, 2020, and recommended approval to council. We prepared this ordinance to amend multiple sections of Title 14 Development Code to bring the city's code into compliance with House Bill 2001 and the Oregon administrative rules that were recently, in August, came into effect from LCDC to implement House Bill 2001, as well as to bring a couple of sections of the code into compliance with the intent of changes that we made through the city council in January of 2020 through ordinance 3120, that were designed at that time to bring the city's code into compliance with both House Bill 2001 as well as our housing needs analysis. All of these changes are intended to increase housing options within Cottage Grove specifically related to middle housing. House Bill 2001 specifically requires that the city allow duplexes wherever single-family homes are allowed. And so these changes reflect those codes, those stat modifications throughout various aspects of the development code. Council went through an hour work session earlier tonight, walking through the various sections of the code. City, the city staff also made an alternate proposal for one of those sections, specifically the section nine of the proposed ordinance. specifically the section nine of the proposed ordinance that relates to the minimum parking standard that is now being triggered by OAR 660-046, which stipulates that we cannot, that medium cities like Cottage Grove with a population between 10,000 and 25,000 may not require more than one parking space per dwelling unit. Our code currently requires four parking spaces for a duplex or one per, or two per dwelling unit, basically. We are, we need to change our code to reduce that parking requirement so that we only allow one or require a minimum of one per dwelling unit. We are, at this point, providing council with two proposals before them for that parking standard that includes basic compliance with House Bill 2001 as well as further modifications for how we deal with triplexes and quads and multifamily. The first proposal would basically change all types of housing to only have one parking space required per dwelling unit. The second alternate proposal would make triplexes, quadruplexes, and multifamily be treated the same as we currently treat multifamily in our code, which is by housing unit size. So, single bedroom units only require one. Two-bedroom units require two. So the larger unit you get, the more parking you are required to have. So triplexes and quads and multifamily would all be treated the same, which is how we treat those types of units for our multi-unit property tax exemption as well as other aspects of our code. So it is compliant with other ways that we treat those types of units. At this point, we are recommending a first reading of this ordinance. If you decide to go forward with the proposed ordinance with the amended section nine regarding parking, we would bring it back for a second reading, or our recommendation would be bringing it back for a second reading and allow us to bring a clean version of that proposed ordinance to you.
Ordinance number?
3136.
Mr. Fleck?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council adopt ordinance 3136 with the alternative version, moving the triplex, quad into multifamily.
Second.
We have a motion with a second, is there any discussion? Mr. Stewart?
Thank you. I'm curious that in our discussion at six, there was a discussion in section six of changing cottage and saying attached dwelling instead. Does that need to be included in the motion or the proposal?
I believe that the terminology would be rather than saying detached cottage. It currently says attached, comma, separate cottage, comma, or above detached garage under the definition for accessory dwelling. The conversation earlier would modify this to be to saying attached, comma, detached, comma, or above detached garage.
I will amend my motion to reflect that.
And the second's cool with that, too.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, will the recorder please call the roll?
Counsel Roberts?
Aye.
Counsel Stenit? Counsel Boone?
Aye.
Counsel Fleck?
Aye.
Counsel Solzby?
Aye.
Counsel Irvin?
Aye.
Mayor Gowing?
Aye.
Okay, so we will see this at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Brings us to item B, first vote for ordinance amending Title 1.5 of Cottage Grove Municipal Code related to system development charges. Mr. Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the city council's held the public hearing regarding the proposed ordinance amending Chapter 15.16, System Development Charges. The ordinance would amend section 15.16.050, methodology subsections C1 and C2, to utilize both the fixture counts and meter size for calculating water and wastewater SDCs. Water and wastewater SDCs for developments requiring more than a 1.5-inch meter will continue to be calculated, excuse me, no more than a one and a half-inch meter will continue to be calculated by multiplying fixture units by the SDC rate per fixture unit. Water and wastewater system development charges for developments requiring meters larger than one and a half inches will be calculated by multiplying the meter size flow factor by the SDC rate per meter equivalent. The amended ordinance language is as follows. Under subsection C1, wastewater SDC fee shall be calculated for all developments utilizing a one and a half-inch meter or less by multiplying sewer fixture units times this system development charge rate per sewer fixture unit. For developments utilizing a meter larger than a one and a half-inch meter, wastewater SDC fees will be calculated by multiplying the meter size flow factor by the SDC rate per meter equivalent. And then under subsection C2, water SDC fees calculated shall be calculated for all developments utilizing a one and a half-inch meter or less by multiplying water fixture units times the SDC rate per water fixture unit. The developments utilizing a larger meter, larger than one and a half-inch meter, water SDCs fee shall be calculated by multiplying the meter size flow factor by the SDC rate per meter equivalent. So the recommendation is that the city council hold its first vote amending Cottage Grove Municipal Code, Section 15.16.050. The ordinance can be adopted in one meeting as it has been available since November 27th, 2020. I would like to call attention to, from the work session, council work session on Friday morning, there was a request to give an example of what the SDC rates would be for a development. So what's attached to the agenda online is an example of an 88-unit development. The development would have 1,673 water fixture units and 1,340 sewer fixture units. So in calculating the current SDC methodology by fixture units, the cost for water SDC would be $481,000, and it's $4.23. If the water SDC was calculated by meter sizes, what's being recommended this evening, the development would require three two-inch meters and the total SDC charge for that development for water would be $210,036. So a substantial change. The same would be for sewer SDCs. The current methodology using fixture counts would, the same development would pay $77,734.40 using fixture count. And then if you look at the meter size, using three two-inch meters as in the water, the sewer SDC fee would be $34,353. So the project savings using a meter size would total $270,968.23 for water and for sewers, $43,381.40. For grand total savings of SDC, water and sewer fees would be $314,349. So I just wanted to share that example for your consideration as you deliberate on this item. Are there any questions?
Mr. Fleck?
Yeah, I just thank you for doing that because as I was reading it, it sounded like we were actually, there's little, you know, current versus, you know, pre-going back to 2010. So I just, I wanted to show that we're actually doing something that's going to help, you know, encourage development rather than, you know, just to make it clear. So thank you for that.
3137?
Yes.
Mr. Stenit?
I'm trying to recall, did we compare these proposed changed fees to other communities in the area? Do we know if it's kind of bringing us in line with SDCs and other similar-sized communities?
When we were discussing this with the developer that's considering a project here in the community, they develop in communities all up and down the, I guess, I-5 corridor. And they shared with us that most of the communities, if not all, have the option of using meter sizes for projects over a certain size instead of fixture counts. And I did verify that that is the case for Springfield, Eugene. I believe there was a couple, I don't have them off the top of my head, cities to the north of there that they work in, did verify that that was the case. So as far as how we calculate the SDCs, this would be in line with most of the cities that I researched.
Mr. Fleck?
Yeah, and just as a further point, the original study back in '09 had this as an option for us to go through. So the methodology, you know, actually was right in line with the study they did back then, which did use comparators for cities our size and bigger. So, you know, that was also done way back then.
Somebody want to make a motion? Mr. Fleck?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council adopt ordinance number 3137.
Second.
We have a motion with a second, is any more discussion? Seeing none, will the recorder please call the roll?
Counsel Roberts?
Aye.
Counsel Stenit?
Aye.
Counsel Boone?
Aye.
Counsel Fleck?
Aye.
Counsel Solzby?
Aye.
Counsel Irvin?
Aye.
Mayor Gowing?
Aye.
Okay, ordinance number 3137 is adopted. Brings us to item C, resolution amending comprehensive fee schedule. Mr. Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the city council has established a comprehensive fee schedule, which was created to include a listing of fees for various goods or services provided by the city. The resolution adds water and wastewater system development fees for water meters larger than one and a half inches. The resolution also includes adjustments to the annual system development fee charges to include the Engineering News Record Magazine's Construction Cost Index, which this past year, the cost of construction increased 2.15% from December 2019 to December 20. So the SDCs were amended to reflect that increase. In addition to the resolution, also reduces the non-sufficient funds fee in section one, government from $35 to $25. It also removes the used merchandise license fee in section five, business, and it reduces the golf simulator fees in section nine for Middlefield Golf Course. Any questions?
We have a resolution number?
2032.
Mr. Boone?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, I move that Resolution 2032 be adopted.
Second.
Have a motion with a second, any discussion? Anyone from the audience wish to comment? Seeing none, will the recorder please call the roll?
Counsel Roberts?
Aye.
Counsel Stenit?
Aye.
Counsel Boone?
Aye.
Counsel Fleck?
Aye.
Counsel Solzby?
Aye.
Counsel Irvin?
Aye.
Mayor Gowing?
Aye.
Okay, Resolution 2032 passes, so we will go to item D, application for multiple unit property tax exemption, MUPD program. Mr. Mongan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have before us this evening an application for multiple unit property tax exemption program. In December of 2019, the city council adopted ordinance 3117, establishing Chapter 3.10, Multiple Unit Property Tax Exemption Program, MUPD, of the Cottage Grove Municipal Code. This program is meant to increase the development of new multifamily housing within the city of Cottage Grove. Before the city council is a second application for the MUPD program, submitted by property owner Nolan and Ariel Brewer. The applicant originally was considering to develop a duplex, but when they learned of the MUPD program, chose to develop a quadplex. The four-unit project was considered and approved by the Planning Commission via Site Design Review Application 1-20. The approved SDR includes the development of a fourplex situated on the southern half of a .19-acre lot located in the southeast corner of East Whitaker and North 22nd Street. Excuse me. Included in the fourplex is a fully accessible ADA unit. This application meets MUPD eligibility criteria, specifically, location of the development site is on or within a quarter mile of an LTD route, and that has three or more dwellings. As part of the MUPD application, the city council should review the public benefit components required in order to qualify for the exemption provided in Chapter 3.10. The applicant must propose and agree to provide one or more design elements benefiting the general public. The applicant has proposed to include a fully ADA-accessible unit with a van-accessible ADA parking space. Additionally, the applicant and staff are working on a right-of-way dedication or an easement for the area associated with the ADA ramp at the southeast corner of North 22nd and East Whitaker, the intersection. The attached resolution has been prepared for council adoption if the city council wishes to approve the MUPD application. It's the recommendation of staff that the city council consider whether to approve the attached application for multiple unit property tax exemption, submitted by Nolan and Ariel Brewer pursuant to Chapter 3.10 of the Cottage Grove Municipal Code. If the city council desires to approve the MUPD application, the attached resolution has been prepared for possible adoption. There was a question Friday morning during the agenda session regarding current property taxes. So the cost of, for taxes on that lot currently are $461.46. That's what it was for the 2020, 21-year improvement. With improvements, the estimates of staff is that it would be $3,900 a year over the, towards the end of the tenure abatement of taxes. So if this waiver is granted through the MUPD program, you know, it'll save the developers, we can pay for, you know, the development approximately $3,900 a year. Any other questions?
This Resolution 2033?
Yeah.
Mr. Fleck?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we, the city council, adopt 2033.
Second.
Have a motion with a second, is there any discussion? Mr. Fleck?
You know, I guess what I was kind of hoping for, to do is show that down the road, you know, this property value as far as the city goes, you know, we'll be getting, you know, approximately, what is that, $3,500 more a year, each year after that than we would have seen without the development. So, you know, without actually crunching numbers, you know, let's hypothetically say 10 years later, we're actually even, we've not lost that $39,000, and we're getting more tax revenue, plus we've increased the housing, you know, you know, number of housing units in the city. So I just wanted to kind of show that this is a win-win all the way around for the city and for the developer and for the folks who are looking for rentals.
Mr. Irvin?
To the similar point, it sounded like there was already a green light on a, was it a duplex development? So essentially, we gained two more units. So that effectively would reduce that added benefit, I mean, lower it over time. But I also want to, it sounded a little bit ambiguous. There was an ADA unit as part of the criteria that's our council discretionary criteria, and Erica couldn't quite, can you repeat the second thing? There was, it sounded like it was a consideration to do more, but not a sure thing.
Thank you, Counsel Irvin. Thank you, Council Irvin. So when the developer was installing the new ADA ramp, when staff went out for pre-inspection, it was determined that the only way to install it was to encroach on the developer's property. So it will have to be resolved. It's not a an if per se, it's just the mechanism for public access, whether it's by dedication or perpetual public access easement for that space.
Any more questions? Anyone from the audience wish to comment?
Mayor, Mayor Gowing, Duane Taddy, 1803 West Main Street, Cottage Grove, Oregon.
Go ahead.
Hey, one of the questions I'd like to see the council ask before considering whether or not to move on this is what the developer plans to charge for rent? It seems that every time I post information for people around town about new developments, they people's biggest question is how much are they going to charge? Are they going to be 1,200, 1,500? I think the council should consider that before offering any kind of deduction to the to the developer on something that they plan on making profit, making a return on.
Thank you.
I think I didn't have my camera on, but I was trying to. So I'd ask the council to consider that before they before they take a vote. Thank you.
Mr. Fleck?
Yeah, I I'd just like to comment on that. When we originally looked at the MUPTI, there were several proposals that we looked at. One of them was Eugene's, which does look at the affordability piece. The problem is the complexity of that. The fact that annually that would have to be checked by the city staff for a number of reasons, we chose to to model our ordinance after the city of Salem. And so it's it's a concern. I agree with Mr. Taddy on that. But I think just for the complexity of trying to do the other, you know, it was in the city's best interest to do this. And I would also offer, you know, market rates, hopefully, as our inventory increases will, you know, become more affordable just from the shareholders sake that we've got more units available. So, you know, I I I wouldn't say this is a perfect solution, but it was our best attempt at making a difference.
Thank you, Mayor. Or Mr. Fleck?
Any more questions, comments? Mr. Boone?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So on that same topic, Cottage Grove right now has a shortage of rentals in every price range. So as as far as I'm concerned, at least, any rent, you know, any new development is good development, whether it be a, you know, big old expensive place or a much less expensive place. And I don't think we're at the point where we can afford to turn any of them away. So, yeah, for me, I'm I'm okay with not hanging a bunch of extra strings on it based on how much they intend to charge.
Yeah, and I'd just like to say when they built the ones over by the fire hall, everyone said those were too expensive and nobody could afford to rent them, yet every one of them's still full. So somewhere they find somebody. Is there any more questions?
Gentlemen, can I add to that comment since the couple of comments were made?
Yeah.
I would ask, real quick, thank you, Mayor. I would just ask the folks to remember that we're spending 40,000, we're going to give them a $40,000 break. And neither Counselor Boone or yourself are considering the 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 homes for the people that live here. I'm, I would like you to ask them what they're going to charge, ask them to stick to that for a year or two, and then also find out what they're charging at those homes by the fire hall and who's living there. So just just remember, I only bring this up because I'm concerned about housing for our people, the people that live here first. Thank you.
Mr. Boone?
All right. So I don't necessarily want to turn this into a long, you know, discussion on this item, but everybody benefits from additional housing, maybe not directly. It may not be someone who has a very limited income who gets into this particular unit. But if somebody else is able to move into that and vacate a unit, maybe they're moving up because they've had a family now or whatever. Anything that relieves the pressure helps everyone. Now, I can't say it's going to help a specific person. I can't say that person will be able to get into this unit. And I don't think that's a role that we can realistically take with our resources and our abilities to tell the future of the housing market. So I get what you're saying, Duane, but I'm not going to ask those questions because the answer won't change my position on this. If they're charging a ton for it, or if they're charging eight bucks a month, my answer is the same. We need the units.
Ms. Solzby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, one other thing I would like to point out is a lot of the reason why many developers are not coming here is because they cannot get the loans that they need to build these. And the MUPTI allows it to pencil out, so the banks will even look at these developers. So once we get more units in Cottage Grove, like Jake was saying, it'll it'll hopefully bring our overall pricing down, or maybe that was you might put, I'm sorry. So anyway, that's just my two cents on that.
Mr. Myers?
I I do want to point out that according to the ordinance, there is no provision for you to be able to ask or set any kind of requirement for rent. That was not a portion of the ordinance that was created when you had that initial discussion. There was discussion about that, and the ordinance as it stands, you do not have the authority to be able to ask or set agreements on rate rent rates and prices.
With that, then I'm going to call the question. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Council Roberts.
Hi.
Council Stenit.
Hi.
Council Boone.
Hi.
Council Fleck.
Hi.
Council Solzby.
Hi.
Council Irvin.
Hi.
Mayor Gowing.
Hi. Okay, brings us to item A, business from the city council. Item A is liquor license renewal fee waiver and other COVID-19 assisted discussion. Mr. Myers?
So in the mayor's state of the city address, you you commented about having a an opportunity to waive the liquor license for businesses, local small businesses that have been ordered closed by the governor or state regulations. And that would, it's a start. I mean, it's $25 to renew for an on-premise liquor license. And we've identified about 20 of the existing businesses out of the 40 some that have liquor license that are those that would have been closed as a result of of the pandemic. So we'll prepare and we'll move forward with doing that. I guess one of the things I want to point out first is in the emergency declaration that was signed and and issued as a result of this pandemic, it does give the city manager the authority to waive associated fees that may be tied to responding to the impact or to the the epidemic, the pandemic, or the emergency that's occurred. So we could do that. We could waive those liquor licenses for those few that do have that meet those criteria. That would exclude the convenience stores or supermarkets or, you know, Walmarts, the Safeways, all of those would be excluded. They would not be included in that waiver because they were open and they were not closed. We also would not would not waive our own fee that we pay for the golf course. We'll pay that as well. We did close for a period of time, but we opened back up and we were never restricted again. So there's no reason to close the golf course. But it would include most of our restaurants, the bowling alley, and and those facilities that had restrictions on being able to be open. So we could move forward with that. But as we talk about that, and one of the things the mayor pointed out too, is to talk about some other options and other discuss other possibilities for trying to help some of our local businesses as well as residents possibly as well. One of the things I want to point out is back early in the pandemic, the council set aside $100,000 and put it into an emergency loan program for our local businesses. We did that pretty quick. We did that before a lot of other stuff came, did before this federal government put out money to go back to in the CARES Act or anything like that. Well, then along the process, some state money came available and through the county, and we pulled 25,000, well, 25,414, but I'm just going to round it to 25 for now because it makes the math easier. But 25,000 out to match some state and county money for grants. As a result of that $25,000 and with what we matched, we were able to leverage a total amount of $85,000 of grants going to local businesses. That still left us the 75,000 or 74,000 some odd dollars of money in the loan fund for loans. Three loans were loaned out of that loan fund, each one for 10,000. So we have about $44,000 of money left in our loan fund for loans to small businesses. I highly doubt that that money is going to be used. The small businesses that need it already are up to their eyeballs in debt and loans and just don't have the wherewithal and the means to be able to to take out another loan or the desire to take out another loan and 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 have failure of their business just because they're already substantially impacted by the pandemic. So one of the things that I'd like to talk about and think if this is something that you're interested in is going back to Community Lending Works and seeing if we can get that loan money back out and use that money to possibly help some of our businesses, maybe even set aside 10,000 or 20,000 of it to go into a residential utility, city utility assistance program for water and wastewater bills. And then the other portion be for local businesses to help take care of some of that. But I also want you to think about what we're doing with some of our small businesses already. We're encouraging some of the businesses that if they're closed and they are not needing their water and sewer service on, to turn it off. You know, if you're going to be closed for a period of time, shut that down and you have a $35 fee to turn it back on when you open back up. That would be another thing we could talk about, the $35 fee for turning on if they were closed because of the pandemic. But if that happens, then we have no revenue coming in from that service. There's also no use, but we also lose on the the improvement fees that are paying debt charges. We do have a business in town, and I want to use this one kind of as an example. We have a business in town that's a rather large footprint business, but it's a small local business owned by local citizens and employees or local people. And their current water bill and sewer and stormwater bill is $420 a month. They're closed. They cannot operate. $355 of that bill is stormwater charges for stormwater and storm drainage improvement fees. So they're better off to shut theirs off completely. We would get nothing. Would it be better for us to say, hey, you know, we'll take care of the stormwater fees for the time while you're closed because they're leaving their water on because apparently they have some service, they they are using a little bit of water at at the business, about 900 gallons to 1,200 gallons. That's not very much. It's probably an ice machine or or some piece of equipment that needs water. And they may not want to shut that off so that when they can open, they're ready to go. They shut it off, they may have to go through a whole cleaning process or do something that they just don't want to have to move through that process. So those are some thoughts. We also have received requests from some local groups that are holding fundraisers for some of our businesses. They want to do fundraisers and they're asking the city for donations. And since we own a golf course, they're asking for us to donate gift cards for the golf course. And great idea. They can sell those in a fundraising campaign or do something like that. But the question is, how do we limit that? If we do one business and another business comes, do, how do we decide which business to look at and do and and participate in that for? So those are all questions. I just wanted to kind of get your ideas, thoughts, if there are anything else that you would think of that we could possibly do. We do have to realize we're running a business too. And we want to make sure that we're not going to damage us. I think if we assisted with with the storm drainage fees for those large places, it might mean that we push some things back maybe a little bit. It's not going to be really super huge, but we'd have to set some criteria. And I guess my criteria would be for those that are actually closed or ordered closed would be the first ones that we would help. And and because, you know, they're, they've got costs that they just can't do anything with, and they can't meet meet any of those costs. So thoughts, ideas, suggestions, any input on any of that?
Mr. Fleck?
A question about the storm fees, would that be retroactive? Would it be just from going forward? I guess I'm just kind of wondering. And and oh my gosh, that is a huge portion of the bill. So community sharing's water bill is about $330 a month, and that is the primary portion of our water bills, the storm, the storm fees.
Yeah, because of the impervious surface and stuff. Yeah, I mean, it's huge and it does have an impact. It could, it could go retroactive. I mean, that's, how do we want to do that? We can retroactive it to include those times when the orders from the governor were making them closed.
Mr. Irvin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd I'd like to know more from the the business businesses that are affected. What would be their their biggest priority? So if we could get a list of those that have been directly affected in the way that we're talking about, and then put some options before them and see what would would best serve them. I think that would be better than, at least for me, just brainstorming what they might need.
Mr. Fleck?
Yeah, as I'm thinking about this, I'm thinking about some of the restaurants that have shut down that may not have huge parking lots, but still have been, you know, impacted every bit as much and would have water bills just the same. I'm I'm wondering if maybe a portion of that money you get back just as applied, you know, as people have. So our housing program that we did for CARES, basically the the, in that case, residents would, you know, basically sign a statement that they've been impacted by COVID. And then they'd be eligible for some funds. I'm just wondering if maybe, you know, reducing water bills based on the amount of money we have left with folks, you know, attesting that they've been impacted by COVID and maybe whatever other criteria that you wanted to put in there. I would want to do it, I think, broadly across the the small businesses that have been impacted.
Yeah, and I would suggest, and this is one of the pieces I didn't mention, but I would suggest in doing that and in or putting some into a residential program too, that we follow the same treasury guidelines that were existing under the existing CARES Act that was extended. By the way, the CARES Act expired on December 30 30th of of 2020. The appropriation bill extended the deadline of the CARES Act into December of third of 21, to the end of December of 21. Oregon Department of Administration has extended, and I think we brought this to the council at the previous meeting and told you this, but they extended that CARES Act to June 30th of 21. But there's no money. I mean, we've spent it because we had, and they made that decision on the 27th of December. And so we pretty much spent all the money before the 30th so that it was gone and done. My thought is if we comply with what the existing CARES Act is and follow those same guidelines, if perchance, the new administration and Congress puts in more funding into the CARES Act and we have followed those guidelines, those could be reimbursable and we'd have additional money to put back in there, either back into the loan fund to replace it or put back into those same programs again and essentially do the same thing. So that would be one of the strategies. And whatever we do, let's try to make it match existing CARES Act stuff so that if they do a new one, we may be eligible for reimbursement and use the funds to help again. So on Council Irvin, that's a great idea. And what I would, I would think is as we get some ideas here, and if there's anything that just stands out that the council says, no, we do not want to do that, what I would like to do then is meet with the chamber and then get these businesses that may be eligible together and do another Zoom, not Zoom, but another virtual meeting with them and say, okay, how would you prioritize these things that we are thinking about doing? And do you have any other suggestions? So we have something to bring to them that they may be able to then give us thoughts on, and would that be of any value to them or or anything like that? I mean, even even the liquor license is a small value. I mean, it's 25 bucks, but it's a start. And when we capitalize and And when we capitalize and add more things on there, it may make it worthwhile even though they're all little things. And I think that may be helpful too. Other thoughts or ideas that we can take back to them or that we don't want to take back to them or that we do want to consider or think about?
Mr. Stinnett?
Yeah, there's been some discussion online and elsewhere about the viability of maybe offering up some more street parking adjacent to businesses that maybe don't have a lot of outside space for outdoor seating. Is that something we could easily do? It doesn't seem like we're crushed for parking downtown and elsewhere these days.
I, that's a good idea. We can add that and see if there's any interest in that if that's something valuable. But I do want to add, and Amanda's raising her hand, but I'll tell them. Travel Oregon has issued some grants, and one of the grants is for infrastructure to aid businesses and specifically it's something that could fund streeteries. And so we've submitted an application, or we're preparing it because it's due next week or something. We're preparing an application to actually pay for the complete construction of the streeteries for three of the businesses. You've only approved two, but there's a third one that wanted to, they're up and running now, that we'd be able to completely install those without any cost to those three businesses. So that was one of the pieces that we're also looking at doing to try to help there as well.
I'm sorry, so that's a build out in a former parking space that's permanent or is that just kind of allowing a temporary? Can we allow a temporary situation as well or?
This would be completely for our streetery program that we adopted. So it's for the season that the street, because we really don't want out, people don't want outside seating right now, although that's all they can do, so maybe they would want it. And we may need to look at our ordinance and adjust our streetery ordinance to allow it to stay into the winter season if we don't get anything opened here shortly. But the actual season, what's the season for our streetery? Amanda, do you remember what that is?
I think it's basically April to November.
Yeah. So we may want to increase it if we get the grant and we're able to get those built and constructed, open it earlier so that they'd have that seating if they're still closed to indoor seating.
Just for your information, I have been told that we're going to submit the grant for all three, but it's very possible that they may only decide to pay for one or two. We're supposed to rank them so, because they may choose to only pay for a portion of it. So it's possible that the council could decide to pay for the ones that aren't covered if Travel Oregon does give us funds.
Can you ask for six?
They have to be actually shovel-ready, which is one of the reasons this grant may actually raise to the top, which it's great that we've already got designs for two of them and council's already approved two of them formally.
Yeah, we're lined up in a really good position for funding on that, so that's exciting. Any other ideas, thoughts? Does that sound like good stuff to take to them? Did anything there strike you as no, we don't want to go there? Any cautions that you have for us as we approach giving away the store?
Do we got to look into getting the money back first? That's what I'm recommending.
Yeah, I do need to look into that. And if that's something that you're interested in, then I will definitely contact Community Lending Works and see about getting the money back that's not being loaned out so we can try to use that in a more appropriate way. If everybody's fine with that, then I'm going to go ahead and move with that. That's probably the biggest first decision and item to do.
I agree.
All right.
Okay.
Got the direction then?
I think so.
Okay, brings us to item B. Yes? Oh, sorry, Greg.
No problem. I was just wondering, when you do go to the council, Mr. Myers, if you, if you could have them provide kind of a rank, rank order level of need or, you know, each business is going to have its own, some might need to have a parking issue, but if they, you know, kind of a bullet list of what, what there is, what the whole span of the need is, and then we can try to apply something across the board. But more information from them, the better, I guess. That's all.
Okay, great.
Well, one more thing on that, Mr. Myers, is maybe we could look at acquiring some more tents for these restaurants to loan them to get through this. Like, some of them have already adopted them, but if we could have some spares that we could put up and help the ones that don't have them and can't afford to put them up.
Okay. I know we just got some, so yeah, that might be a possibility.
Okay. So brings us now to item B, the Historic Landmarks Commission appointments. Ms. Ferguson?
Thank you very much. So the council appointed a subcommittee to conduct interviews for candidates for two Historic Landmark Commission positions that expired on December thirty-first, 2020. That subcommittee was composed of Counselor Roberts, who was the chair, Mayor Gowing and Counselor Stinnett. The two outgoing positions are open to be filled right now. In addition, we have two new positions that are open as council extended the membership of the Historic Landmark Commission, which is in our code in section two point two six point oh two oh, from five to seven members via ordinance thirty-one twenty-two in February of 2020. Per that section of code, the commission has to consist, shall consist of seven members with a demonstrated positive interest, knowledge or competence in historic preservations. Members shall be appointed by the city council and a majority of the members shall reside within the corporate boundaries of the city of Cottage Grove. We had four applicants for the Historic Landmark Commission this year. The council committee interviewed three of those applicants, Larry Woody, Deborah Monsiv and Holly Turpin. Chester Turner, who was the fourth applicant, was unable to attend the interview. The interviews were held on Monday, January eighteenth. Counselor Stinnett recommended appointing Deborah Monsiv, Holly Turpin and Chester Turner to the Landmark Commission for three-year terms ending on December thirty-first, 2023, and Counselors Roberts and Mayor Gowing concurred. The copies of the applications of the candidates were attached for your information. So the recommendation tonight is that Deborah Monsiv, Holly Turpin and Chester Turner be appointed to the Landmark Commission for three-year terms that expire on December thirty-first, 2023.
Mr. Boone?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I move that Deborah Monsiv, Holly Turpin and Chester Turner be appointed to the Historic Landmarks Commission for three-year terms that will expire on December thirty-first, 2023.
Motion with a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All right. Opposed. Okay, item C, dedication of public right-of-way by the city of Cottage Grove, map and tax lot two zero dash zero three dash two seven dash three two dash zero one four zero one. Mr. Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on Janu-, in January of 2016, the city of Cottage Grove received by fee simple title, the unit of land known as tax lot twenty dash zero three dash twenty-seven dash thirty-two dash fourteen oh one, or lot two of land partition plat two zero one six dash P two six nine one, which is the developed Gateway Boulevard. The Gateway Boulevard property was never dedicated as a public right-of-way. Staff is bringing this public right-of-way dedication to council at this time as a companion to the right-of-way dedication for tax lot eighteen hundred. Staff believes that by dedicating this lot at this time as the dedication of adjacent right-of-way portion of tax lot eighteen hundred, it will ensure that the proper alignment of the platted right-of-way takes place. As present, at present, as shown in the attached exhibit, the entirety of the lot is encumbered by Gateway. Staff is prepared a right-of-way dedication deed for your consideration if the dedication is approved. Two signatures from the mayor required, one to as grantor and the second to accept the dedication on behalf of the city. So the recommendation before the city council is allow the mayor to sign the right-of-way deed as grantor and also accept on behalf of the city the public right-of-way.
Mr. Fleck?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council allow the mayor to sign the right-of-way deed as grantor and accept on behalf of the city the public right-of-way.
Second.
A motion with a second, any discussion? Seeing what the audience wish to comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Okay, item D is dedication of public right-of-way by the city of Cottage Grove, map and tax lot two zero zero three two seven three two zero eighteen hundred. Mr. Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in January of 2011, the city of Cottage Grove received by statutory quick claim deed, the unit of land known as map and tax lot two zero zero three two seven three two, tax lot eighteen hundred, and a portion of the developed Gateway Boulevard for the sum of thirty dollars, as shown in Lane County deeds and records document number eleven dash zero zero two two one three. This parcel of land had a single family dwelling on it many years ago prior to the creation of Gateway Boulevard as it exists today. But when the home was removed and the road built, Lane County did not take the step to plat the road as a public right-of-way. At present and as shown in attachment exhibit A, the northern two-thirds of the lot are encumbered by the existing Gateway Boulevard and the lower one-third remains undeveloped and maintained by the adjacent property owner. A developer approached the city over the spring of 2020 about developing a large multifamily development on the, in the vacant undeveloped lots on the south side of the developed Gateway Boulevard. To reach the maximum development of the site, the developer asked the city to consider selling a portion of lot, tax lot eighteen hundred to the developer for the sum of a thousand dollars in the cost of the professional surveying services. Council had heard this approach and will consider it at a later date. Staff considered several avenues to achieve council's direction and the developers' need to, need for additional land. One option considered was to permit a partition or a property line adjustment to occur, but this is not permitted based on minimum lot dimension requirements. Second option considered would have been to sell the entire lot to the developer with the requirement for the dedication of the right-of-way where Gateway exists. The applicant completed their development project, but due to perceived issues by staff regarding property taxes and enforcement, this option was removed. The third final option chosen by staff and reviewed by legal council would have the council dedicate the encumbered portion existing on Gateway Boulevard to two-thirds of the, of tax lot eighteen hundred as public right-of-way, leaving the remaining third parcel to be determined at a later date as surplus property and potentially sold to the developer. Staff has prepared a right-of-way dedication deed for your consideration. If the dedication is approved, two-thirds, two signatures from the mayor are required, one as grantor and the second to accept the dedication on behalf of the city. Is recommendation from staff to allow the mayor to sign the right-of-way deed as grantor and accept on behalf of the city the public right-of-way.
Mr. Boone?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I move that we allow the mayor to sign the right-of-way deed as grantor and to accept on behalf of the city the public right-of-way.
Second. A motion with a second, any discussion? Anyone from the audience wish to comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Okay, item E, safe routes to school and Fillmore Stormwater Outfall Project change order. Mr. Bradsky?
Thank you, sir. Last month, I came before council and explained the aggregate sum of the change orders on the safe routes to school, Fillmore Stormwater Project had exceeded ten percent of the original base bid. And when we exceed that amount, I explained that when we exceed that amount, contract language states that city council needs to approve the items for extra work and authorize the creation of the change order. I have before you to consider is five more items for approval for change order seven. One is the reconnection of Resurrection Life Center's parking lot to the new storm drain pipe. Remove and regrade an existing sidewalk at the north end of Lincoln Middle School to meet the ADA requirements. Raise an existing water line over the new sanitary sewer line that was installed and build a block retaining wall at Lincoln Middle School and build a, as well as the southeast corner of South and Fillmore, and then place four inches deep of concrete within a park strip at twelve fifteen South Fourth. Those items total twenty-seven thousand one hundred and ten dollars and six cents. Council at our December meeting had some concerns and I was unable to answer at the time what we had budgeted in expenditures to date. I've provided a table in the memo that basically shows that the, based on budgeted numbers in the current budget, the city has budgeted five million, five hundred and twenty-seven thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars in expenditures to date and the funds that, which have been charged is three million, two hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred and forty dollars and seventy-eight cents. I'd like to point out of the expenditures, eighty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars will be reimbursed by South Lane School District because law allows them to add on to our contract because it's competitively bid and to use our bid. And so we partnered with them. We also will be getting reimbursed from the safe routes to school grant that we get. We could be reimbursed up to one million, two hundred and seventy-two thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars, and there could be some minor reimbursements from residents for some small work that they're asking for outside the limits of the project that, you know, we have a concrete crew there, they could pour a little extra concrete for them or vice versa. But some work, minor work to do that we will charge them. So staff recommends the creation of, for approval of the five items mentioned to create change order seven. Are there any questions?
Mr. Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How long does it take to get the money from South Lane School District?
I would guess that we might have received it. South Lane School District was built two weeks ago, and I don't know if it's come in, but I would, knowing their process, I would say within a month.
Cool. By the way, it looks really good back there.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Boone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we approve the extra work items totaling twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and ten dollars and six cents.
Second. A motion with a second, any discussion? Anyone from the audience wish to comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Item F, election to council president. Mr. Myers? You're muted.
Yeah, my screen came on and said, you're muted, you're muted. According to our charter in chapter three, section nine, the city council at its first meeting each year is supposed to select a president from its membership. Well, we didn't do it at the last meeting. It was just kind of, it was an oversight. So we have that before you tonight as at this council meeting to elect a council president. Counselor Boone has been the president for the last two years, I believe, and so it needs to be from your membership.
Mr. Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to nominate Mike Fleck as council president.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to nominate Mike Fleck as council president.
It looks like Ms. Solby seconded it, just her microphone and her mouth wasn't on the same. Mr. Boone.
I was gonna ask, we don't need to second nominations, do we? Nominations are just made, is that correct?
I don't, I think you do still, just for the...
Okay, but it won't hurt to do it, so yeah.
No, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion with a second for Mr. Fleck to be council president, any discussion? Mr. Irvin.
Think he was made for this job. He'd do great, Mike.
Well, thank you, and I really would love, love serving. You bet.
Mr. Stannett.
Counselor Fleck's who I would have suggested also.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, item G, city council subcommittee and liaison appointment. Ms. Myers.
So the mayor has provided a list, it's attached to your memo of the various subcommittee appointments and liaison appointments for council members. Now would be the time to discuss that and see if there's any issues associated with those, those appointments. They do require some, attending some meetings and being the official liaison with some of those organizations as well. The council should review and approve the mayor's appointments, and then the council then would have to separate out the vision keepers appointments and appoint those as the council. The mayor doesn't get to appoint the vision keepers, the council as a whole does that.
Should have told me that before I went through them.
You made a recommendation, yeah.
So just for process, do we need a motion then to accept these?
Yes.
So I move that we approve the mayor's subcommittee and liaison appointments.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion with a second, any discussion? Mr. Stannett, then Mr. Irvin.
Just to clarify, was I kept on as liaison to the pool advisory committee? Is there still a pool advisory committee? Did we get anywhere?
I checked with the school district and finally heard from them on Friday, and there is no pool committee that the pool, new pool person was aware of.
There is no committee.
Thank you.
So you're off that one, Mr. Stannett. Mr. Irvin?
Well, that was for two of us possibly. I don't know, Mr. Stannett, maybe we would like to take the Lane Workforce Partnership Council. But I don't feel that it would be wise for me to take on additional new committee commitments at this time to be able to, so I would like to maybe amend the motion of removing me from Lane Workforce Partnership Council and maybe replacing me.
Counselor Stannett, would you be willing to accept that?
I'm not sure I can take on another one, honestly, guys. I'm still, I guess, exploring my capacity these days and kind of learning a position and apologies, but...
Well, maybe I better ask, what is that commitment? How often explore that?
I don't know.
Mr. Boone?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I've been on the Lane Workforce Partnership Board for the last, I don't know, a couple of years at least. And it's relative, it's not a very heavy lift. There are generally quarterly meetings, and then maybe one or two more kind of scattered around. But it's, it's not a particularly onerous task. The meetings are usually sometime around lunchtime. They have staff that does all the real work, so that's nice.
Well, if nobody else will take it, then I'll, I'll fill the role.
Mr. Stannett?
With a little more information on the commitment, if it's, if it's onerous for Counselor Irvin, I suppose I can find a way to make it work.
We could try these for a month or two and see how it's going and revisit if somebody needs to trade. That's, we can more work something out.
Well, I appreciate the flexibility. Thank you.
Mr. Myers?
And I guess the question is, did the motion mean to include the vision keepers as well, or are we gonna do a separate motion for appointing vision keepers?
I apologize, I missed that, and the vision keepers as well.
So we only have one listed for the vision keepers, and there are two representatives from the council on the vision keepers. So we do need one more.
Can we fill that one at a later date?
We could.
Okay, that was my intention on that.
Okay.
Who seconded that motion?
I think it was me, and I'm fine with the reseconding of the change motion.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion with a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, item H, goal-setting work session. Myers.
So every other, every other year, we, as a council, get together and kind of go over our goals for the city council and the city. The goals are then used to help staff put together the budget and other priorities for, for the city as we implement those. The last goals were adopted in 2019, and so it's one of those odd years, 2021, as a numerically odd, to go back over those goals and review those and determine what kind of changes we want to make, adjustments, whatever, so that we can have those to guide us through the next couple of years. Looking at the schedule and hoping to have the assistant to the city manager included in that process as part of that, I'd like to suggest that we do it in later March, either the 20th or the 27th. It would be a, probably about a four-hour exercise, and those are Saturdays where we could come in on a Saturday morning, work on it until noon, or if, later if we have to, and provide some opportunity to draft out some material, then we bring it back to a city council meeting where you can make other amendments or changes or little adjustments to that and actually adopt those as your goals for the, for the next two years. So basically, what we're looking for is do the 20th and 27th work for everyone to be there and, and attend that as a goal-setting session, and we need a motion to do that.
So is it either/or or both days?
Either/or. I guess you could do both if you really wanted to, but either/or, either/or.
I'm flexible with either.
Don't do or, just either, yeah.
I'm flexible with either one, so fuck it, brush. Mr. Stannett?
I'd prefer the 27th if it's possible.
27th seem to work for everybody? Someone put it in a motion? Mr. Irvin?
I move that the council meet on March 27th from eight to noon to meet, to go over the initial goal-setting and hold the work session.
Second.
A motion with a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, concerns from council. Mr. Boone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So with rather more emotion than I felt I was going to feel, I am announcing that I am resigning from the Cottage Grove City Council as of midnight the night of February 4th. I am doing this because I am intending to seek employment, and that employment will preclude my continuing on the council. So I do want to say, I think in the 10 years I've been here, I have served under three mayors and with roughly a dozen different city councilors, and it has been an absolute privilege and a joy, and I am gonna miss this a ton. From my, my time on the league, I've spoken to people from other councils, and I can't stress enough how lucky I have been to be on this council with these people who are able to consistently interact in a civil and productive way to, to get stuff done. I mean, we all disagree on things a lot, but I know every single member of this council has the best outcomes for the city of Cottage Grove in mind in everything that they do. And I am just pleased as hell to have been a part of it, so thank you all so much.
And thank you. Like I said on Friday, it's, it's been a pleasure to be on here for 10 years with you. And, and, you know, serving as council president, I could always rely on you to, to pick up the things that, my weaknesses are the technology stuff, and I could rely on you to cover that for me. And so that really was, was a pleasure to work with you. You're gonna be missed. Here.
Thank you.
Mr. Fleck?
Yeah, I would, I would echo your comments, Mr. Mayor. I, I will miss some of Jake's more colorful explanations. You know, they, they have entertained as well as educated, and I, I am the wiser and, and happier as a result. So you will be missed in this role. I think that you will, you know, excel at your future, you know, employment, wherever that happens to be. And I wish you the best, and thank you for your service.
Mr. Irvin?
I just want to thank you as well, Jake, for just the times that we've had the conversations, and especially when I was just coming into this role, and you were a really helpful-sounding board. And just, I think the token even of that little economics book that you gave, which I read, speaks, speaks volumes to, you know, you actually care about individuals and you care about the city. And like you said, even if we don't agree on everything, just a demonstration of civility that, that is a, a light to, to everybody to see that, that hopefully will be, will be followed. So yeah, thank you for your leadership in this role and to whatever comes next.
Ms. Solby?
Jake, I just want to thank you for your leadership and your absolute commitment to this community. You will be sorely missed, but we wish you the best of luck in whatever adventures that you will be taking on in the future.
Mr. Stannett?
Yeah, Jake, I'd like to thank you a lot for some terrific quotes during my time as a newspaper representative, for your encouragement for me to get involved myself when I was mulling that over. And it's been an honor to, to serve with you. Thank you.
Does anyone have any other concerns, comments? Mr. Irvin?
Yeah, thinking about the, the vision keeper, and I know this brought, Vision Keepers group, and it was brought up tonight. And I think this is like the only forum that we can all talk together at the same time legally. So I'm kind of curious, and I guess it was set up by the council with a mission to, and I can't tell if it was to report back to the council about things or to come back with recommendations or action items. But I guess since we have this forum, and we're gonna be appointing someone else to that Vision Keepers Committee, I'd like to hear more about why we stood it up and has it met its mission, and what can it do, and things along that lines.
Mr. Myers?
So the, the Vision Keepers are created by a city ordinance, and in the code, there's a provision that actually sets them up as an official committee. The membership of the Vision Keepers is representative of those lead partners that are identified in our vision, in our 2037 vision. There are two councilors that are, then appointed from the council to serve on that as well. There are school district members, board members also that are serving on the Vision Keepers too, as well as the other key leaders that are identified in the, in the plan. And that can change as some of the items that occur in the plan, in, in the goals, vision statement fall off or come back on, or an organization changes and we need to put one of those other lead partners in. The purpose of that committee, what we like to tell that, that committee is, their purpose is to do nothing. They don't, they're not supposed to do anything. They are supposed to basically come back together and represent all those different organizations and report how each organization is doing on their key pieces that they're supposed to be working on in the vision plan. The Vision Keepers is not set up to do the actions of the vision. The lead partners are supposed to be doing that work. They're basically the cheerleaders and the ones that come back and report to each other. Here's how we're doing. Here are some stumbling box, blocks we found. Then other organizations can step in and say, "Hey, we can help you here," and, and bring that partnership and that, that collaboration between those other organizations together to get those visions accomplished. Now, our two Vision Keepers that are from the council are to come back to the council and report on items that do appear in the Vision Keepers that would be something that the council needs to be aware of and, and bring that information back. So that's kind of in a real quick nutshell what they do. They do have some awards that they've set up that were identified that they'd, in the plan and in the ordinance that set them up, that they would grant awards for those organizations or recognize achievements as a result of accomplishing different things in the visions, in the vision statement, and they do that. They're also charged with kind of doing a review every so many years of the vision plan. We were supposed to do a revision this last summer, but as a result of what's going on in the world and the environment, we've put that off again. It will probably be later in this summer, maybe, but probably next spring. Not 2021, but probably '22, just because we want to get back out of this thing and then be able to just dive in and actually have face-to-face meetings with 300 people in a room again and, and go through like we did with the first one. The Vision Keepers will be key in helping move through that process and, and everything, but they won't really be in charge of that process. It'll be done with a consultant and some other working bodies be a part of it, but they'll be included as, as kind of assistants in that. So that's it in a nutshell. It's a really fun group, and it's an interesting opportunity to get in and learn and hear, you know, what the hospital's doing, what the school district's doing, what Coast Fork Watershed, what all the different organizations are doing, and how some of those things are interlocked together and, and can help one another get things accomplished in the vision statement. And there are a number of things. It's amazing how much we have accomplished in the, in the vision, in plan that, that was created in 2008, so it is quite old now, and that have been accomplished. And some of them, the Vision Keepers have actually said, "Hey, this is on here," but it's not something we're gonna do right now. And so some of the items, they've just kind of set aside because times have changed, and some of the issues have changed as a result as well.
They started with 94 bullet points of where they wanted to be by the year 2037, and then they started, they took the top 20, I believe, 20 or 25, and as they accomplish those or said it's never gonna happen, then you move up to the next, next one and add to it. That was one of the first committees I was on as a counselor. Very educational and it's a good, it was a good entry committee for the, for the community to learn about how the community works together.
And they meet quarterly.
Any more concerns? Mr. Fleck?
So the community sharing warming shelter opened for the first time about an hour and a half ago. Will be operating overnight. I want to thank the city staff for coming out and helped me get the generator going. That was awesome. You know, it, it's been a challenge, and I know that there have been certainly hiccups all along the way, but, you know, we're really hopeful that this is gonna be a good experience, not only for the unhoused in our community to stay warm, but also, you know, as far as building, you know, coalitions and working together to try to, you know, get things done. And so I just want to say, one, I really appreciate all the help that we've been given so far, but also I need to give out a huge call for assistance. So we activated tonight, we initially went on a stand... We initially went on standby for tomorrow, but we are not going to activate for tomorrow. So we are getting some additional help from a local meteorologist for weather and thank you to those who suggested that. Hopefully, as most of you know, predicting weather in Oregon is a challenge. Hopefully, we'll get a little better at guesstimating the temperatures. But we definitely still need volunteers. In fact, we may end up hiring a couple other folks because we came up a little short tonight as well. And so I'll be leaving here in a few minutes and going down there as well. You know, so like I said, we would love to have volunteers to help set up, clean up, or we have a hospitality tent that we're putting some food and some warm clothes and stuff in. And we would love help in any of those areas. Thank you.
Mr. Irvin.
Mike, could you talk about what kind of commitment that volunteer help looks like in the onboarding process?
So we do a training. We did a video. We had Whitebird Cooch folks did an excellent conflict resolution training that we asked folks to watch. We also will do some onsite, kind of this is what we do. We have, Forrest is an employee of ours that's managing the shelter. They have done an incredible job with a very detailed manual that outlines every single detail of every job and/or volunteer position. So, gosh, I would say that the commitment's as little as a couple hours setting up or cleaning up to staying and helping if you wanted to for whatever portion. So we would love help as little or as much as folks would like to give. Obviously, we do have some COVID concerns, so if we all of a sudden turned around with a huge number, we would probably have to address that, but that is not the case at this point. So yeah, let me know. I'm happy to share that manual with you and/or walk you through the process.
Anyone else? Okay, we will move on to Business for the City Manager, Item A, 2020-21 Financial Grade Report. Ms. Lickens. You're muted.
That's better. Good evening, Mayor Council. The end of the calendar year is the midway point of the city's fiscal year, July 1 through June 30. The 2021 Financial Grade Report is as of December 31, 2020, and you have that before you. The report consists of revenues and expenditures compared to the adopted budget. If all things were equal, we would expect to see 50% of the budget remaining. But however, some expected revenues are paid quarterly and some monthly, as well as some expenditures are paid at the beginning of the year and some are paid monthly. So not everything is equal. Staff uses reasonable deductions to apply the grades that you see in the report. Traffic light is indicated there, which shows the grade scale and each of the funds for revenue and expenses. All funds are meeting or exceeding expectations except for three, which are the Street Fund, the Industrial Park Fund, and the General Reserve Fund. They are graded at under supervision. In the Street Fund, we will be receiving federal urban aid in the amount of $113,000, which we did receive in January, actually. And safe routes to school grant reimbursements in the amount of $662,890 at this point. So state and local gas tax revenues are estimated to be about 48% received at the end of December compared to the budget amounts. Additional money will be needed to be spent on safe routes to schools and will be closely monitored. The Industrial Park Fund is anticipating additional revenue from the sale of property. Currently, there are resources in the fund to pay for debt obligations through this fiscal year. The sale of property will be actively pursued and the fund will be closely monitored as well. A number of expenses have been made related to the coronavirus pandemic and were allocated to the General Reserve Fund. Those expenses have been tracked and are anticipated to be reimbursed through the CARES Act. Once all of the funding is received, a resolution appropriating the unanticipated grant funding will be brought to the city council through review and approval. It's staff recommendation that the council reviews the report and ask for clarification as needed. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them now or bring more information to you at a later time.
Got any questions? Mr. Fleck.
So Bert, what do we think about gas tech revenues? I mean, you know, I'm assuming that this recession is probably going to last longer than shorter. Are we going to end up putting off some projects? I guess this is a Richard and Bert question. Or how do we think we'll adjust to those revenues being down in the gas tax?
And I'll address first, if you don't mind, Richard. Right now, we think we're only about 2% behind what we budgeted. So in the beginning, we reduced from what we anticipated from the year before. So I think we're going to track those fairly close, hoping that the pandemic is going to get better as vaccinations are rolling out. So we'll just have to monitor that and then not do projects or put projects off until we actually have the revenues to do it. But we will be watching it closely.
Yeah, I don't have anything to add. She covered it all. Yeah, I think we did knock it down a little bit when we did because we weren't sure what was going to happen. I think the Google Analytics or the Google Mobility information that you can look at, the trips and the amount of stuff is increasing. So I think for the rest of the year, we'll start to see some of that increase. It still won't be where it was supposed to be, but since we're so close right now to the 50%, I think we're going to be pretty close at the end of the year to what we actually put in the budget, not to what we've gotten in the past, but to what we have in the budget.
Any more questions?
I will tell you too, from the information we've heard from the state, they're anticipating that their state gas tax money won't be just for this year. The reduction will be multiple years is what they're telling us, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, so we have Item B, the COVID-19 Emergency Leave Policy Ratification. Mr. Myers.
So with all this COVID stuff, back in April, we issued a COVID leave policy. And then it was soon thereafter replaced by a new policy in April that complied with the federal law. We issued one in March earlier. We adopted a policy that matched the federal family's first legislation and other changes on the state level, and you have that in your packet. That all expired on December 31. The federal leave that was for COVID expired. We have prepared a new policy that takes out some of the hard-to-understand pieces that were in the federal one. It also removes the limits because, you know, it is tightly controlled that we only have four criteria that you can use to use the leave. But if somebody is sick or they have a family member that is found to be infected with the virus, they are then quarantined and it could happen that they may end up getting sick two weeks later or a week and a half later and then be quarantined again for two weeks. We do not want them to feel pressure to come to work. We want those people to stay away and recover. So we don't have the 80-hour limit in there, but it is something that does fall under the Family Leave Act and the OFLA, the Oregon Family Leave Act. So there are some other limitations that would apply there as well. But you have before you our current policy that is, began January 1 and basically asking for you to say yes or no to ratify that. And we can make that a policy for the city until this is over. The policy still maintains the 14-day review that staff will review it every 14 days or so just to make sure that things are still going forward and that it's still working and there hasn't been any change. So if the federal government changes and some federal law or state law changes leave policies, we'd adapt that to match that as well. But under the emergency declaration, I have the authority to set this, but I wanted to bring it to you to get it ratified because it does have a financial commitment that we are paying paid leave for those things to keep people at home and away if they are ill. It also includes leave for parents that are taking care of children that are out of school. That may be something that will be ending soon, hopefully in another month or so. That may change and those leaves would not be there. So we have a couple of staff members that are using the leave for care for children that are not in school, that can't be in school right now. Some of those employees are working and doing some teleworking as well, so they're keeping the amount of leave that they have down while still doing some work and committing that for the city, so.
Mr. Fleck.
So, Richard, didn't we discuss Friday that the financial part of the family's first actually was renewed with this last stimulus legislation?
As far as I could see, I didn't see that. If the... I didn't see that. That's not what we've been told, so yeah.
I wish I could have found it. I thought I read that that piece of it was, you know, it's kind of a funky thing. You actually, they reduce your payroll tax liability so that you can pay folks. It's kind of a weird deal, but I thought that was extended.
That was never the case for municipal governments. We never got any kind of assistance with payroll tax or anything for local governments. We were specifically exempted from the first bill. The only way we were able to do any kind of reimbursement was through the CARES Act when that came out to reimburse for leave that was used. So in that original family first, cities were specifically exempted from being able to collect any kind of assistance. That was a real slap that, you know, a number of cities went to their congressional delegation and said, hey, why are we excluded and you don't need help? That's basically the response we got from Congress, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that the city council ratify the January 2021 coronavirus emergency leave policy as provided.
Second. A motion with a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, report from the city manager.
We did have a comment on Friday that the new way the agenda is on the page is a little cumbersome. It is. It's even more cumbersome putting it on. So we are making some adjustments to that. We did play around with some samples this, today and Friday, scanning and doing some different things. And we will be able to go back to how it was before and it will still be searchable. So it'll look more like it used to look with everything under the staff report rather than multiple items to check on for each agenda item. So that'll be much nicer for you and for us that we've figured out that technological thing that we needed to do. So we're looking forward to that. I just also want to mention City Hall Day on the 28th, on Thursday. It's an all-day thing. It's virtual, so you can come and go, I think, throughout it. So if there's anyone who is interested in still signing up for that, I think we can still sign up because it is virtual and it's free. You provide your own lunch, I guess, and everything that way. But it should be quite interesting and encourage anybody who does have the opportunity to sign up. And since it is free, you could sign up if you only had an hour or two of the day. That would probably still be beneficial for you, I would think. I haven't looked at the actual program yet because we just got the information on the platform that is being used to do it in email today. So those of you who signed up, please check your email. You should have the login information and how to get onto the platform to do City Hall Day at the Capitol in your email basket. That's all I have.
Nice. Okay, so there is no items removed from the consent agenda and we're adjourned.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, Jake.